Any of the Hyde Park Planning Board, please take note of all the exits in the room, and now join us as we re-pledge our field key to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everyone. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Hyde Park Quick Stop. The applicants are seeking site plan and special use permit approvals to completely renovate an existing convenience store and filling station located at 4912 Albany Post Road in Statsburg. They're being represented by Mr. Brendan Patrella. Welcome, Mr. Patrella. And as I said before, congratulations. Even with the comments from DOT, you turned it on a dime and made everything work.
Yeah, it was, I assume everybody's familiar with the changes that we've made. If you'd like, I can walk the board through it, but basically, all we did was we turned the one-way the other direction. You know, that just made sense with the in-and-out-only with the two drives that could not have two-way traffic. It actually ended up reducing the amount of impervious coverage we had on the site as well. So, our variance was a little bit more than we needed. So, it worked out well. It was a fairly simple solution.
Do we have any questions or comments from the consultants? Nope, all? Any comments or questions from the board?
Nope.
No.
Thank you.
Just very excited to see the progress.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, my work really starts now, too, so.
I'm required to ask this, although I don't believe there's anyone here from the public to speak about this application, but if either... Oh, that's right, so I may get a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a resolution prepared of approval with conditions. We sent it to Mr. Patrella, who okayed it. And I believe this will be introduced by Ms. Weiser.
Yes. Resolution approving special use permit and site plan, Hyde Park Quick Stop, August 17th, 2022, resolution number 2022-10B, whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board makes following findings pursuant to section number 108-4.4 of the zoning law. One, the project will comply with the applicable requirements in Articles 4 and 5 of the zoning law and be consistent with the purposes of the chapter. The zoning administrator has determined that a gas canopy is a structure and that therefore all parking shown on the planned site is located to the rear of the structure. The applicant has obtained variances for scale, lot coverage, and setbacks. Two, the project is consistent with section 108-1.4 of the zoning law. The project is a redevelopment of an existing gas station which will encourage economic development. Further, the layout of the project will protect water sources. Three, the project will not result in any excessive off-premises noise, dust, odors, solid waste, or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. The applicant has revised the proposed lighting plan to avoid off-site glare as opposed to an average of 14.5-foot candles. Four, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads considering the current width, surfacing, and condition. The project is located on US Route 9. The additional pumps will not result in any impact on traffic patterns. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants conditional site plan and special use permit approval to the project as depicted on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or is authorized as a need to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan set to include a stipulation that references, that any references to signage for the project are for location purposes only and do not constitute design approval. Three, approval by the attorney to the planning board of assigned easement arranged between the applicant and Robert J. Delarm regarding the replacement of a pipe into the wetland and the resulting increase discharge and proof of recordation of same with the Dutchess County clerk. Four, receipt of final permit approval from the Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC. Conservation. Five, receipt of conceptual permit approval from the Department of Transportation, DOT. Six, approval from the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for the methods of water supply and sewage disposal. Seven, receipt of stormwater management and erosion and sediment control permit from the town of Hyde Park. Eight, approval by the attorney to the planning board of assigned stormwater easement and maintenance agreement allowing for periodic inspections by the town of the stormwater management facility pursuant to section 93-8B of the town code to include periodic inspection of the jellyfish water quality treatment unit and proof of recordation of same with the Dutchess County clerk. Be it further resolved that the applicant will need to reapply with the planning board to receive approval of any kind of, of any and all signage for the project. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a burning building permit, the applicant shall set, the applicant shall provide the planning board with the PDF of the fully signed site plan set.
Second.
After all that. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any days or extensions? That carries unanimously. As I say, congratulations, Brendan. Now, we're all excited to see this, and you have many conditions to meet. I will hope that you meet all those. Remember, you only have six months, and we can give two extensions for nine days, that's it. After that, you have to reapply. And I'm only saying that because recently, we had a project that's located on 9G East Torsey, it's a Dollar General, that they couldn't meet all the conditions because of Department of Health with the water and the wastewater. That's been solved now, but just make sure that you keep pushing hard, is what I'm going to tell you, okay?
Yeah, that's, they have been a little slow, so.
Overworked, a lot of projects going around the county.
That's, that's everybody.
At any rate.
But they are, the applications are in, so hopefully, we'll have those answers and resolutions back to you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you always.
Always a pleasure. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
So, just for the record, that vote did require a supermajority, which was obtained.
Yes.
And so, I'm going to ask that the secretary send a copy of the resolution over to Dutchess County Planning.
That's a wise idea.
So they're aware of the vote.
Why it requires a supermajority?
Because the parking, our code requires parking to be placed behind the front line of all buildings in these districts. But Tad opined a while back, or determined, I should say.
It's a structure.
And it's, yes, it is a structure, the canopy. It's static assembly of materials to provide shelter, et cetera.
The county has a Greenway Guide, though, that want, that always wants the pumps behind the convenience store. And I think there's only one gas station in all of Dutchess County that's ever done that. It's in Rhinebeck. So, it's something they push for often, and they did push for it here, but...
But if our own zoning administrator, I'm sorry to take a minute on this.
Well, from a legal perspective, it wasn't required, but from a planning perspective, you could have required it. But we had the discussion, and it's, the language is in the resolution. When you looked at the alternate layouts, it actually put the pumps closer to water resources, which in this particular case was, you found was not appropriate.
No, remember all of that. My question is, if our own zoning administrator opines there's a structure, and therefore we're, it's compliant, why did we need a supermajority?
Because from our zoning perspective, the zoning administrator is absolutely correct. But the county planning department has review authority over anything on Route 9.
So they required it.
So they can require a supermajority if they feel that there's a better plan that would, you know, have a better community or county-wide interest.
Okay, thank you.
A supermajority was also required at what was then Hess and now is Speedway.
Yeah.
And it was similar circumstances. There's a stream behind it, and if we reversed it, it actually hurt the environment more than what it does the other way, so. But we do look at this each time, because it is my goal, one day, to have the pumps behind the building.
One day.
Not in this case, though. Thank you, Brendan.
I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you, Brendan.
The next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Town Center North Buildings. This is an extension of all deadlines for site plan approval, but in essence, what this is an extension of is the building that we know is feeds-plus. It has not been renovated yet, and the applicant sent in a letter asking for an extension because they've been focusing on the building that was the former grocery stores that's being turned into the Board of Elections Office Building, so that's why they want to get this extended, get that one started now as well. Anybody have any questions on this one?
No.
Nope.
So, I need a motion to set a public hearing for September 7th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Rite Aid signage. Ms. Forrest is here, but you don't really have to come up, we're granting, we're granting everything. Unless you want to.
She drove all the way here. She drove all the way here and 10 pounds of paperwork, just in case.
No, 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 no. So, in essence, this was reviewed by our board. We recommended smaller variances. Actually, the county planning, more or less, recommended denial until they came back and had even smaller variances, which Ms. Forrest and the ZBA worked that out, so they ultimately, she ultimately got all the variances they needed. We'd given discretionary bonuses prior to that, so all we have to do now is actually approve the final set that was approved by the ZBA. And that's what this resolution does. Any questions from anybody? I believe this is Ms. Dexter's.
Yes. Resolution recommending issuance of signed permits to Rite Aid Pharmacy, resolution number 2021-36A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the board recommends that the zoning administrator grant the applicant's request and issue permits for the signs shown on June 8th, 2022, sign plan.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Nancy. Sorry you came up here, I should have told you not to come.
No, that's okay. You never know. You might want something else.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. Have a nice night. The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver request from Kyle Muller. This is located at 5 Calmer Place, which is in the scenic area of statewide significance. We have a recommendation from the zoning administrator to do the waiver. This is for replacement decks in the front and rear of the parcel. Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Then this is being introduced by Ms. Wasser.
Town of Hyde Park, Kyle Muller, 5 Calmer Place, site plan waiver, August 17th, 2022, resolution 2022-37. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Kyle Muller to replace rear and front decks on existing footprints to his single-family home. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit application dated July 15th, 2022, and the request for a waiver of site plan received by the planning department on August 9th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is another second, a second site plan waiver. This is for new construction of a barn and deck. This is located at 71 Penny Lane in Statsburg. If no one knows where that is, it's a private road. It's actually a home directly on the river. This is behind the area. This is also in a scenic area of statewide significance, but there is no lighting proposed on the riverside of the structure, so it should remain fairly unseen unless you can take a 90-degree angle and really stare at it while you're on the river. And we have the recommendation from Ms. Moss. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oliver, this is your resolution.
Site plan waiver, 71 Penny Lane, resolution number 2022-35. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Christopher Schultz for construction of a 24-by-32 barn attached to the main level, 16-by-32 deck on the property associated with a single-family home requiring a building permit. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department July 13th, 2022, and per the request to the planning board dated July 13th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you, Rob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, and thank you, Tad, for getting this out to us today, is Hudson Valley Hospice Depot. This is a sign permit recommendation for wall-mounted antenna panel signs. The applicant had actually approached Ms. Moss and Ms. Cynthia, Ms. Whitman, and I about another location that didn't quite work out, so I'm glad to see they do now have a location. This is, for everybody who called, this is by Shelley's Deli. Anybody have any questions or comments? It is code compliant? And I think this is Mr. Waters' resolution.
Yes. Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to town code section 108-24.3A, Hudson Valley Hospice Depot wall sign, 473 Violet Avenue, Hyde Park, New York, resolution 2022-38. Whereas, 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 be it resolved that the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the wall sign permit for the Hudson Valley Hospice Depot submitted by Paul Birscher on July 18th, 2022.
Shouldn't this have a tenant panel as well?
The next one, the tenant panel.
There's two, that's right, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I looked at these and I forgot there were two of them, sorry. Mr. Griscio, yours is the second resolution?
Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to town code 108-24.3484A4D. My reading, Hudson Valley Hospice Tenant Panel and Free Standing Sign dated August 17th, 2022, resolution 2022-38A. Whereas, 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 be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the tenant panel sign permit for Hudson Valley Hospice Depot submitted by Paul Rite Card on July 18th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dexter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Bringing us to the penultimate item on the agenda, or the ultimate, penultimate item on the agenda. This is a response to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater request to become lead agency for a project, and Jonathan Churins, the deputy director, is here tonight to discuss with us. Welcome, Mr. Churins. It's great to see you, and congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here before the board. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Can you please make sure you use our microphone with the air conditioner? It gets a little hard to hear sometimes.
Sure.
Thanks. And taller, yes.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Oh, okay, great. I also have a very soft voice, so I apologize for that. Again, let me start over. My name is Jonathan Churins. I'm the deputy director for the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. We are a public benefit corporation that was created by the state at the request of the county to work with communities within Dutchess to resolve water and sewer issues across the county. Over the years, starting in about 1998, the water authority has been a strong partner with the town of Hyde Park, working to resolve water and sewer issues across the town. Namely, the first and probably one that would stick in many people's mind is the Statsburg Water System. The reservoir was dark water at the time, we interconnected the Hyde Park Regional Water System. Moving on, we interconnected other areas in the community to that superior supply and excellent water quality, including the Harvard Hills Water Area, looping into the northern area to resolve issues. And we recently connected the Pine Brook Water System, resolving longstanding issues with iron and manganese, radionuclides, sodium chloride, and generally unpalatable water. Over the last 10 years, we've worked to assist the town with transferring certain smaller water and sewer systems that were built by developers in history. These would be the Greenfields Water Sewer System, Pine Brook Water Sewer, Quaker Hills, and also Vanderburgh Cove, and then some systems that were developed to address water contamination throughout the town, which would be the Violet Avenue, Green Bush area, as well as the Arbers. And so, following on, excuse me, following on that same premise, we have one particular water system in mind at this point that we've come before you to speak about. This is the Greenfields Water System. This is a system built in the 1960s. It has four active wells at this point. Originally, 12 were drilled. The first set of wells are now inactive. We do not have sufficient supply there to serve the existing water zone of assessment in community. A portion of that is already built out with single-family homes and some attached dwelling. There's also a small vacant area that is indeterminate in how the zoning would apply, so I'll leave it politely that way, but we are...
Discreetly stated, by the way.
We are required to serve this area, and the system has historically had issues with iron and manganese and quantity. More recently, the federal government has identified that there are issues with the perphonic... Wait, 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 hold on. Perfluoro-octane sulfate acid, which is basically more known as PFOS. It's a contaminant that's found across the nation, and requirements were made in the last two years for water systems to undergo sampling to identify where that would be. The Greenfields Water System of its four wells had hits for that particular contaminant and others. These are considered emerging contaminants. The New York State Health Department, under Part 5, has required that the water authority pursue and address the water quality concern for the system. We have started a, engaged with, excuse me, CPL, engineering firm, to do an initial study to identify four potential options to resolve the water quality concerns within the community. The onsite solution, which we, is always an option, is a difficult one for this area because of the history with well supply and the inability to provide water to the community as is and with future development. Further, speaking to that water quantity issue, if we were to add treatment to the system, it would require reject water. You have to treat. There's a mechanism, and then water is wasted, and then cannot be used in the system, and so then our existing supply is not available. If you were to look at where the wells are drilled across the properties available to the water authority to serve this community, they satisfy both the land owned by the authority as well as park land owned by the Town of Hyde Park, and we've worked to protect those water systems through the transfer to the authority, but we are concerned that there may not be... When in doubt, just take a drink. This is Hyde Park water, by the way. And so, we're concerned...
So is this.
Yep. Or if you're drinking water in this town, it's most likely Hyde Park. And so, with, with the reject water, it would be difficult to address the community's concerns, and we're concerned there may not be ability to drill more wells into that bathtub that is the land that's there. And so, looking at the additional options, looking for the best value for the community, and also understanding the grant loading that's available, the federal government and the state are pre-positioning certain grant funds and making available to the communities through an application process which requires scoring. The application process is very short, and we need to complete that by September 9th. Before you is a request for the town planning board to consider granting the authority to move forward with this initial seeker, speaking to the grant application, allowing us to move forward and seek these, as the federal government and state refer to it, life-changing dollars coming from the federal and state to address these kinds of concerns. I would expect that there will be modification to the project over time that may require us to come back and do seeker again, and so I will be speaking with you again in the future. This application is specifically to address the grant application and to seek funding at this time, and we will be developing the project going forward, building on the good works that were done by CPL earlier in the year. I would be happy to answer questions. That's my initial pitch.
Let me start over to my left. Ms. Weiser, any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Waters?
Well, I guess, my, are we talking about the letter, or...
So, the letter would be the response. They're looking for us to agree for them to be lead agency. What Mr. Churins just basically described is that there is a neighborhood who has, who the residents experience water quantity and quality issues. The quantity's been going on in my 17 years of sitting up here. Quantity. They've had to truck in water many a time. I didn't realize how, that the quality issues were as strong as they sometimes are. And as he said, there were initially 14 wells drilled?
12.
12. Now, seven are inactive, so...
We're down to four working wells.
Wow. So, there's not any other place that they can drill in this area to serve this neighborhood for the district. And what they're looking to do is, again, for us to agree that they can be lead agency. They need to be able to submit a complete application to the state, I guess it's the state, by September 9th.
New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation?
EFC. So, what we'll require is, is that they must include a secret determination as part of the application. And when Mr. Churins mentioned scoring, every grant application, you get, you have to check off, do we have this? Do we have this? Do we have this? Having reviewed grants, it doesn't really matter the quality of what your narrative is at first, that you just go through and check, do they do this, do this? Then it gets on the pile, the rest goes to the side. Once you then go through and look at how they've scored, then you start evaluating on the particular needs, say, in this description of what the needs are of the residences in the neighborhoods. That's when they look at a qualitative decision on how they're going to grant. This project has better results for a wider group of people, say, than this one does, even though they both had everything they need. And I believe in terms of scoring, if you connect this to an existing system that's basically continually branching out, that that gets higher scores?
That is correct. We score very well in this project as it's currently arranged due to emerging contaminant as well as existing contamination, the interconnection, and there's also the opportunity that because the interconnection will require, will require flow from the Hyde Park Regional Water Plant, we'll be able to make upgrades at that location to provide the flow to this particular development. And so, it is a win-win across the board for both the Greenfields Water System and the Hyde Park Regional Water System at large.
I seem to have missed that, because, so you would be making upgrades to the current intake system?
Potentially.
Imperpation?
Not the intake, but there are certain choke points in the treatment process where it may be that we need to do an upgrade. One potentially would be the cell's handling. There's a particular, it's not a deficiency, but it was originally designed for a particular flow, and so by upgrading that, it would be necessary to serve this community. It is also beneficial to the entire system at large.
Okay. Okay. So, so that answered, basically answered my questions, because it was weighing the concerns over development versus the quality needed for the people in that community.
Right.
So, so that's a no-brainer, because they need to have quality and quantity. And I'm just, my only concern was the change in development, overdevelopment in that area, since there's some large parcels, I believe, out that way.
Understood. And I would say that the existing zoning would remain in place, and so that would dictate what's allowable. I think a good portion of the transmission main area is 2.5 acre. Our intent is to use the existing, I'm going to define it as zones of assessment. This is the service area that we can provide, we are as of right required to provide water, so that would be the Greenfields Water System, as well as the Hyde Park Regional where it exists. The areas in between, we have no rights to provide water. If it were to be done, it would be on an emergency basis for an existing development. But when it comes to a development, as you're describing, that is something that would be in the future, that would be, require acts of the legislature or request of the town. There would be seeker involved, there would be a whole host of effort that went into defining that service area and including the build-out.
To translate that for you...
Oh, sorry.
That means is, is that as the waterline snakes east to go to reach to Cream Street, where it would connect into the Greenfield Section, all the properties that are in between have no actual rights to actually tap into the water, because there would be a new zone of assessment, as it's called, for Greenfields, and then there's the existing Hyde Park water supply. So, what they would have to do is petition to become tenants to the district, I believe, or create a new zone of assessment. That requires an act of the legislature, and it usually requires a request by the town. That noted, I did want to point out that anybody who's going to be able to get town water usually wants it, because it's a lot easier than, particularly like, say, for a summer like this, when you might have well issues with quantity and drawdown. So, imagine that once this goes in, you would have many properties, if not the whole area in between the two, requesting to become part of the Hyde Park Water System.
It's a significant cost, though, to pay for water when you...
The cost, the water would already be going up. I want to point this out again. If these monies are used for the infrastructure to bring the water up, all you have to do is then pay to have the water brought to your house.
True.
Or your development. There is, that costs, no matter what, if you're developing, even if it's just the infrastructure from your well to your house and the drilling of the well. So to me, that's kind of a...
Since some of these people will go on the public water, then, will the aquifer, you know, be more bountiful for the other people who decide to stay on the well?
I mean, you would abandon the...
I would think so.
Essentially, we would be taking 50,000 gallons of draw off the table if we were to interconnect the Greenfields Water System to this regional water system. And so then their draw out of the aquifer would not be there, so that would be available for others. The water budget would be that there's more water, yes.
Okay, okay. So that was the only thing, because just with the way this has been proposed to us and in the time, and now we're under time constraint, because I think you have to apply by a certain date, that makes, that's why I had these questions.
I apologize for the delay or the rapid nature of this. It was when we realized the additional requirements that went with this particular life-changing grant, we acted as quickly as we could, and possibly some more communication would have been helpful, and I would hope to come before you in the future to speak more about these before we get to this point.
Okay, great.
But we're just trying to, you know, do what we can for this community for the best value.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Wasser?
No, I'm not going to add anything further. Thank you.
Vice Chair Dexter?
So I appreciate all of this interaction, because that definitely helps me to clarify my thinking. So when you are concluding seeker, because this is rectifying an issue, a groundwater issue or a public health issue, it seems to me that that's part, I mean, that would score heavily in your favor, right? So when you're doing seeker for this, you're not necessarily saying, what is the impact of having to run the pipe up the roads from Madison Avenue over to Cream Street and Greenfields? Right? That's not really what you're looking at?
We are looking at the impact of running the pipe through the road as it will impact the road.
Okay.
So, you know, sediment erosion control during construction, things of that nature. It is, with any construction project, we would go through this process, but we are working in a disturbed area predominantly.
Right, right. You're not going through, right, it's a road, it's...
And we would be connecting to an existing water system and then using the infrastructure there to then feed the community that already exists and receives water from this.
Right, right.
So it's really about replacing the water supply.
Right. So I guess my only other question is, would we ever get to see this Greenfield Project area map that was mentioned in the EAF? It talked about a Greenfield Project area map, but when we had the request for lead agency, we did not get a map to kind of show us and illustrate.
It was also the narrative that there was supposed to be a map attached, but we didn't ever receive it.
Right. I will do that tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
I will work with Michael to make sure that I address your concerns. I did not realize that there was a map not included.
That's the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why the question is.
Oh, understood. Okay.
Thank you so much.
I will make note of that, and I'll talk to Michael tomorrow to make sure I have accomplished that.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Vice Chair Oliver?
Thank you.
My concerns have already been addressed, and questions have been asked, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
A question. I mean, is there a reason why you wouldn't want to encourage other people to hook up to that pipe?
So it's partly a timing issue. To create a Park County Water District Zone of Assessment, it requires about six months after you've won the hearts and minds and defined the project. It requires creating a map planner report, defining the costs, and at this point, we have a grant application that we're putting in. We have defined service areas that already exist, and so we're able to utilize those to leverage the situation. At some point in the future, if there was interest for water in the area, we could consider that. But for the moment, this is the project that we have. We can only serve the community that is in dire need of addressing their water quantity and quality issues.
I mean, I'm all for that, but I'm just saying, you're going to put a pipe in the ground. Are you going to put fire hydrants, anything like that, or it's just going to be a pipe?
It's a transmission main, and so...
None of that.
I believe that we'd have to look at what the pressures are to see whether or not it can sustain fire flow in that area. It's, when you go beyond, I'm going to say, actually, I'm going to correct that. No, we will not provide fire protection in that area because we're going to be after a booster station, and the intent here is to provide potable water. And so any hydrants that are located there are for flushing purposes and potable water concerns. It has to do with the nature of how the system is designed hydraulically, and were proposed at this moment.
Oh, yeah.
To add fire protection at that location would mean that we would need to greatly increase cost and provide larger pumps and/or provide storage at an elevation that land we do not have. And so it may be at some future date, long after I'm gone, 20, 30, 40 years, there may be an opportunity to do fire protection in that area. At this point, we're concerned with water quality and doing that with best value. So fire protection is not a concern at this moment. There are areas throughout Hyde Park that do not have fire protection. That would be Arbers, Green Bush, Violet Avenue, Greenfields currently, which is the one we're talking about interconnecting. Pine Brook Water was converted over to. We don't have fire protection there yet, but we anticipate that after the certification is complete, they will. Quaker Hills Water System does not have fire protection. And then there's a series of private water systems that I'm not involved in that don't have fire protection. But in this case, no fire protection.
I just remember from building a few houses in that area, there's, water runs can be, have terrible wells on Cream Street on the right side. And I know, wasn't there a development that failed over there years ago?
It's called the enclave.
The enclave?
It actually had excess capacity of water.
It did?
It has sodium and, I believe, cadmium in it as well. It has to be noted to be filtered, but it had a huge amount of flow.
It should be noted that the enclave is outside the area of where we're talking about interconnecting, and would require steps that are unavailable to the authority at this time, because we do not own the system, we do not own the land. The water system is indeterminate in its status, and so it's not a consideration for a option to resolve this. Just to point that out.
All right, thanks.
John, to sort of go between the two, what you just had to say, when Jonathan said they have to win the hearts and minds, so Green Bush, the neighborhood that's, you know, just on the west side of 9G, there was a fuel spillage from a gas fueling station years ago, caused a plume, and it hurt all their water. So yes, that is now Shelley's Deli, where the station used to be. As a consequence, it took several years for Richard Martino, how's that, who was the head of the Water Committee there, to convince enough neighbors that they should have water brought in, because they were not able at times to shower with it, much less drink. Yes. Just because of the contamination from the fuel. So in other words, it does take time in some cases to get enough people, enough hearts and minds, so to speak, so that you'd have over 50% vote to say, yes, let's become part of the Water District. And once that happens, everyone in that district or the zone of assessment has to pay, but they don't have to connect. So some people, I think, in Green Bush chose, opted not to. In this case, I believe what Mr. Churins is also saying is that they've already won the hearts and minds of Greenfields, because those people know that they have quantity issues. So they'd be raring and ready to go. So it sounds like everyone's comfortable with exceeding lead agency status. I do want to point out that the letter we're sending, which agrees, does just point out that we have some expectations. That way the onus is on you, whether or not it's done by the county or not. Does that sound good for everybody?
It does.
Okay. I get a motion to authorize me to sign the letter and send it over to Jonathan. He can take it home tonight.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Jonathan, just let me sign, and you can...
You can carry it back.
Carry it back.
I look forward to working with you all in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thanks, consultants, for staying throughout.